Is that thing subject to FOIA? Because it happened after the city council meeting adjourned properly. Camera was left on by mistake. Is that FOIA-able? Was that taped after the council meeting was over? Is that FOIA-able? Court said, "No." No official city business was conducted. Again, it's kind of what you're doing is most important. It was in city hall and the city council members' video tape. But the meeting was over and no official city business obtained the method. So that particular portion of the date is not subject to FOIA. Handwritten notes. Some of you probably take handwritten notes when you're up there at a council meeting. Somebody said, "Wait a minute. That's a public document. I want to see what Robert is writing up there." And so they FOIA-ed it. And the question is, are those notes subject to FOIA? In this case, the court said, "No."
Really?
They were writing, but they were not in furtherance of an official function.
Oh.
They were purely personal. They were notes that Robert was taking for himself.
The content.
Robert wasn't going to give it to other council members. They were not a part of the minutes. Court said, "No." I think it's correct city. Again, the content is all important.
The content of the note.
What individual council member requests documents from the city or village? Should he or she have to file FOIA? Well, it seems logical that you wouldn't have to, however, if you're an elected official of the community. But it's an individual. It's not a vote of the council FOIAing a particular document. Coco can weigh in on this and give us some practical experience. There's not a legal answer on this one, in fact. It's a judgment call. But what is the public going to think if only one single council person gets something? Shouldn't that council person go through the procedures the public has to go through? Is there an advantage for that particular council member if only he or she has the information that was requested? Should the manager have a policy to say, "Molly wanted the data on the cost of the fire truck?" Probably a good thing to have, but should the manager have a policy that he shares that information with each of you? So you all have the information. So you don't have to even play. You all have the benefit of that information. I guess I would suggest a policy by council vote, allowing the access to documents, and when you sure should not need to use a FOIA to retain material from the city. Maybe a little bit counterintuitive, but I think there are reasons why it's maybe a good idea to have you go through the same process that citizens go through to get into that. I guess two covers. Again, have a policy.
You see Linda Winstein. More FOIA requests.
And begin with, again, a policy. And it really, really is important that you keep this in mind. This is the way the legislature wrote it. That's their intent, and the courts really try to adhere to it. Strengthen the right of all Michigan citizens to know those are government required. All public bodies, if not them, all business have open meetings. When in doubt, assume it should be an open meeting. Notice it. Follow some procedures. Add insight to, protection. Maybe work on some guidelines on the civic and social sorts of events. This is a good way to go, and I hope I've been helpful. Now I'm going to turn you over to Coco, who's always got something to give. She's going to talk about parliamentary procedure, but I guess a lot of other stuff. We could probably give you some practical experience on some of the legal stuff that I tried to work through. Thank you.
And then for Bill. Yay! I'm going to give you a press preview. I noticed, I watched your meetings, and you do a good job. You have really taken on a challenge, putting yourselves out there electronically. So I'd like to suggest some things that make you look a little sharper. Afrox now that you're doing the whole electronic thing. I noticed that you use the consent agenda. And I also noticed that at the beginning of your meeting, you make the statement about people speaking and everything. This is very good, and you may want to consider adding this to the issue. This is an International Municipal Clerk's Bulletin. And if you'll go down to the first, to the bottom of the first column on page 1, right here, page 1. This is what you say. All matters listed under whatever item it is, consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The next paragraph is just a different statement of the same thing. So that might be helpful if the mayor would say that when the consent agenda comes. And then I noticed the mayor asked, "Is there any discussion?" Well, we've just said there isn't any discussion. All we have is removing things. So after the mayor asks that, perhaps, you seem to be raising your hands to speak, as far as I can tell. Perry might raise his hand. Item 3, item C. That means you want item C taken off. Just one person request, no second. Then my turn to council member Powell, who has her hand up. She looked like item X on. Actually, that would be quite a great consent agenda. Let's make it. Item C and D. Now the two items have been removed. You move immediately to the vote. Except, you have a little bit of an issue that you have to resolve here. You didn't need to ask them.
Oh, so the public can remove things from the consent agenda? Okay.
Because maybe they came to discuss that.
Okay.
So that, you may have to look at your speaking policy and say, with the exception of consent agenda items, or however you want to work that.
Okay.
So does that mean we have to break down that consent agenda that includes this, that, and the other thing? So call it, label it as A, B, C, D, so we can address the consent agenda topics via letter or another?
Or some way of identifying very quickly so they don't have to read what it is.
Sure. Yeah, currently I don't look, we have it by item, not A, B.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do we?
Okay.
Is it?
Okay.
We would say by item.
Yep. So then the vote would be taken. And notice that whenever we take away people's right to vote, to talk, we always take a two-thirds vote. So that would be a roll call vote. Now, I usually like to put items removed from the consent agenda as the very next item on the agenda, because I figure they just removed them. We have them in front of us. Let's talk about it. And the chair would simply go, put in the order in which they were taken off. First, it comes to member Hopkins. What was your issue with item C? He might have a question, which when answered, he would be satisfied and would have the adoption of item C. Might have a question that would raise, to me, a little more information, and he might ask that be referred to the next meeting. Obviously, when you go to the public, you can ask them why they're taking it off, but they cannot make a motion. They're doing it. That would have to resolve to the council to take action. So I just thought that that might be helpful to actually have in print. And those are just all those suggestions of typical items you could put on and remove I'm moving quickly, assuming that nobody brought a slipper there. This is a flyer produced by the National Association of Parliamentarians and is absolutely the best single-page flyer I have ever seen for Robert's Rules of Order.
Can I pass it on to the man?
Yeah. Do we speak the extra two? Okay. And do the same thing with the consent agenda. This is Robert's Rules of Order, 10th, 11th edition, which is published now in 2010. And there are 117 changes from the 10th edition. And I actually can do a workshop on that. So if you have difficulty sleeping, just call me. I'll be right over. The good news is none of them affect municipal government. So whatever edition you have, you probably find, I like this one, which is Robert's Rules of Order newly revised in brief. It's well-written and is meant for people who are not necessarily parliamentarians. It has a good question and answer period, and is available for $7.50 from your favorite bookstore. Or you can go online to the National Association of Parliamentarians and see what they have to offer. Just a word about Roberts. This book was written by, I mean, it looks big. People wave it around and say, "Oh, it's a big thing." It's just making motions and voting. He was a general in the Army, in the Corps of Engineers. An Army man and an engineer. It is so laid out. It just builds upon itself once it gets started on that. Let's take a look at the back of the handout I just gave you. Example of a typical meeting. And I'd like to emphasize the word "typical," because you can arrange your agenda in any way that you like. This is just a typical meeting, and this would be more of a typical, regular 501(c)(3) meeting. You are all in lots of organizations. Many of them are nonprofits, whether it's your religious institution, something at school, the Elks, Lions, the U. N. voters. I'm sure you have all of the above and more. The rules are, as you have seen from what Bill has presented, different in many cases there, in terms of the Open Meetings Act, in terms of freedom of information, in terms of things that you can do. So you have to kind of pay attention to which is which. Newly, we have workshops we do for newly elected officials in large groups. And one of the things that we always notice at the end of the day is newly elected officials have a hard time kind of getting the fact that they now don't have two fangs. They want to be both the private citizen and the publicly elected official. It's really hard. You really pretty much become the publicly elected official. But you have to remember that the rules are different, and you have to pay attention. So many times people will say to me, "You know, I've been in the PTA forever, and we just didn't do it that way." Well, that's true, actually. That's absolutely correct, because the PTA would be a nonprofit, and this is elected government, and they are indeed different. So both are right, but Robert's Rules does not have you pay attention to the Open Meetings Act. So they don't know about previous notice. They don't know about the things the clerk has to do, except if you're in an organization that has bylaws. I'll bet that one of the final articles is how to amend the bylaws, and it probably says in there, "You have to send notice within 30 days," or something like that. So there are elements in both. But I just put that out there for you to pay attention. So this is a typical meeting. After determining that quorum is present, the presiding officer rises, waits, or signals for quiet, and says the meeting will come to order. And as properly done, you use the gavel. You're only supposed to use the gavel twice in a meeting. You did use it once there, and you get to use it at the end and say, "The meeting is adjourned." Banging the gavel is not proper. Not proper. After the national political conventions are on, I always have a lot of banging, gavel banging. I have a lot of organizations out saying, "No, don't do that." Then if you have--
Policy debate coach, literally.
If you have opening ceremonies, and this is a nice list for you, because if you're putting together an event, this is the order in which you do it, if you're doing some or all. The invocation, the National Anthem, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States, inspirational messages, follow patriotic exercises. So it's kind of helpful to know what order they go in. Roll call, if customary. I noticed that you take roll call whenever it has to do with money. Across our 500-plus municipalities, when they take roll call, varies incredibly. Some never do. Some do on everything. Some do only when it's two-thirds. Some do only when somebody calls for it. You are welcome to establish anything you like. Doing it on money is not uncommon. That's one of the most typical reasons. But that's up to you. Reading and approval of the minutes. Well, we've discussed minutes quite a bit here. I did a presentation at an organization's request. An elected body wanted to know, "If we use Roberts and we use the requirements of the Open Meetings Act for minutes, how do they fit together?" The answer is perfectly, except for one item. They both like only what was done, not what was said. And they both like clarity, but in the adoption of the minutes, when you approve them, in an elected body, once that's done, that's done. In a nonprofit, if I later find a mistake, we can go back and correct them. And that's the only difference between the two documents on writing minutes. Do you have any minutes questions? I know I always say the minutes could be shorter. And I know that clerks are trying to please those of us elected officials by putting in so many golden words that we said. But we really should give them a break. Short minutes. One of the things that I have interested in is, now, public comment. I didn't look at your minutes in regard to public comment, so I'm not commenting on this community. But I did a workshop for a whole bunch of city clerks in mid-Michigan, and I asked the question, "What do you put in the minutes under public comment?" And one of them said, "Five people spoke." That's what she put in. And somebody said, "She tried to put in people's comments when they spoke, "Go on, con," but she never got it right. And she really realized she can't summarize what the people in the audience said, because they can't correct the minutes. So they have given it up. So courts are really putting less and less in. Now, one clerk said, "The only time she puts in a name and a request is something that has to be satisfied." So if there's a follow-up, she puts it in. Again, it's all over the place. I'm just giving you an idea, because it's not an official part of the, while it's required for every public meeting. And now that you know that your subcommittees have to have public meetings, you'll make sure to put public comment on all of those. Every public meeting must have public comment. So that's the minutes.
I think we have a question?
Oh.
For your public comment, does it, it can be put at the beginning of the meeting, or the middle of the meeting, or the end of the meeting?
Again, I just took a poll of a group of, we had about 100 in that last workshop of the MML from all over the state, and I asked the question. This is the three most common. In the beginning, which is the school board model. In the beginning for items on the agenda, and at the end for items not on the agenda, which is a very popular municipal model.
That's what we did at the school board.
Yeah, okay. So that's a popular municipal model. It's usually used in communities where you want to make sure you get to the business, which would have people comment on the business on the agenda, but the other details can wait till the end. The third is comment on each item on the agenda as it comes. And then at the end, public comment for items not on the agenda. That one has been the surprise to me, because in the over 20 years that I have been the MML parliamentarian and periodically asking that poll, that's the one that's gaining ground.
Interesting.
Coco, if that were the case, sometimes I try to express it that it can be at the beginning or the end. Or if you know there's only one item on, and I suggest, you know, whether you're going to repave Elm Street or not, and you know everybody's there repaying Elm Street or not, then maybe that would be the time to put, you could have it only there.
Yes.
In that regard to a particular agenda item, if you know that everyone's there to comment on it.
And of course, that's another thing about building your agenda. You want to put that item up front, near the front. I mean, you have to call it in which order, which is a consent term, it sounds like that, but then you would go right to that, so that you can satisfy the citizens. Again, as I say with the roll call, it is all over the case. You, Open Meetings Act requires you ask for public comment. It does not give other requirements.
Okay. So we're meeting that.
You're meeting that. You're meeting that. And knowing that someone told me the other day that they went to a neighboring community, and they certainly are doing it wrong. And I said, "No, they're not. They're doing it their own way." That's why we're home rule cities. And that's why we like being home rules.
Coco, what do you do if your municipality has a public comment earlier? And they have it. And two or three people say something. The meeting goes on. Somebody was only able to get to the meeting. They got there late, and they said, "Well, wait a minute. I need to say something."
Which I think is why the practice of taking comment on each item as it comes has grown. I also think the other communities that take it on each item tend to start with, have a real formula. Here's the issue. Here's the report of the DPW director, the fire chief, or whatever. Because one of the things we know about resolving public disputes is that everybody in the room is coming with a little bit of information. Yes, you have your regulars who come to all the meetings, but then you have the people who come only this one time this year, because it's their issue. By having the report there, you start everybody on the same place. Then you take, then you have the action by the comments by the council, I'm sorry, and then take public comment. Very often, the amount of public comment decreases tremendously, because now they already got the answers to their questions when they heard the report of the DPW director, or they got the sense when they heard the council speak. So I think that that's one of the reasons why that has, and I'm not saying it's yet reached the most by any means, but I think that may be why it's grown. Reports of officers' boards standing with special committees, which this, again, is a typical volunteer board. And then we have special orders. Now, you never see those words on an agenda. That's when you have the once-a-year time when you change the bylaws or do elections. Unfinished business, general orders, new business announcements, program, and adjourn it. And just as I really think it's wise, in a public body, to take a vote on the minutes, I think it's wise to take a vote to adjourn. Because you know, once you adjourn, that's it. Clerk have to post if you want to meet again. So that's it. Now, on the motions, on the front page, making a main motion, I want to help you spiff up how you say things. "I move that," or "I move too," is how you begin a motion. "I move that," or "I move too."
As opposed to, "I would like to make a motion." You shouldn't say that.
I mean, of course, I'm not going to say you can't say. I'm just going to say, if you want to be doing it in a way that is really according to the typical way, we just say, "I move that," or "I move too," when you're recognized. And then, what happens after the person makes the motion? There is a--
Second or support.
Right. And you, I noticed, not you particularly, as a group, you tend to lean more heavily to support. You know, it's not wrong, but it's not really right, because you don't have to be for the motion. You might actually be opposed to the motion. But you would say, "This has been around so long. I want this out there. I want to talk. I'm going to talk against it, and I'm going to hope it's defeated, but I want to just end this." So you don't have to support it. And sometimes a few people say, "I'll second that for purposes of discussion," while there's no need to say that whole sentence. That person is exactly correct. That's all you're saying. One other person wants to talk about it. What happens if there is no second?
They die.
Didn't even die. Didn't even have enough breath. It's just gone. So that's why I encourage, I wouldn't say anybody was wrong when they said support, but I want you to understand that really what you're doing is saying, yes, somebody else wants to talk about it.
Well, if there's a motion made and no second, what would the third put in the minutes of anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, it never happened?
And so now we have a motion and a second. The chair is now going to state the motion, and that's a very important part. Let somebody make a motion to buy something. "Well, I'm moving by a new fire engine." So soon we have the motion on the floor, and it's seconded. And now, for the moment, I'll play the chair. It is moved and seconded to buy a new fire engine. Now I'm going to call on the maker of the motion to speak first.
Okay.
It's, once I have stated the motion as the chair, I have said, "Now that is the motion." And before I stated it, the seconder could have changed their mind and say, "I withdraw my second." The maker could have even said, "I withdraw my motion." But once I state it, I have now taken that motion, and it is no longer, the maker and the seconder no longer own it. Now it's everybody's motion.
Is it sufficient to say the motion has been made and seconded?
To--
You need to say "to."
To.
Okay.
Because you want to enable the person who made the motion hear what you're going to say, in case what they said was, "No, I wanted a steam-powered fire engine." You know, so they need to-- I didn't hear that. They need to hear what's said, so that you really need to state the motion. Also, now that you're on live, you have to, and I'm coming from experience of having gone on live TV. My community is called, they call it Monday Met Live. And it's very popular. Most watch local show. But it does mean that people are going to watch. They don't, they have to have somebody say the motion. The fact that council member Powell said it, and then council member Hopkins seconded it, they not necessarily got what that motion was. So that's why the chair really needs to say it. And then the chair turns to the maker of the motion and gives the maker of the motion the chance to speak to the motion first. That's a courtesy. Maker of the motion doesn't have anything to say, perfectly all right, say, "Pass." And then you proceed with discussion, taking turns, which you seem to do very nicely. Sometimes councils have trouble with that, and they call out instead of waiting for the mayor to call on them. Again, it not only makes it a little unruly, but now that you're on live, you want the mayor to be able to say to the council member to call on them, say their name, because your TV's a little bit further away. So I was identifying you more by when you were being called on than by the fact that I could see your names or anything. So you want to, have you all watched it?
A thesis.
You should watch it, and then you'll get the sense of what it is that's going on. Okay? Now, we've had discussion. The chair asks, "Ready for the question?" It's written right there. And by the way, it's written right there what to say. "It is moved and seconded that." Are you ready for the question, so you can show the mayor? The question is on the adoption of the motion that, and then you would take the vote. And I have already said, we're going to tell the mayor, all those in favor, say "aye." Those in favor, those opposed, say "no." He was using the phrase "same sign."
That was the school board thing.
Yeah, and that's not, no. After all, when we put a ballot on the issue, when we put an issue on the ballot, we're always careful not to ask the people to vote "no" than vote "yes," or the other way around. So when you say "same sign," you ask somebody to say "aye" to vote "nay." Matt? That doesn't make sense, okay? So let's look at, what's the most common motion you make, other than the main motion? No, but you know, one of my favorite, favorite groups is the Wayne State Student Senate. I have been there parliamentaring for a long time. And when I do training for them, and I ask and say, "Would somebody make a motion?" You'll excuse me if I say it this way, but it's always one of the scholars who says, "I'm over adjourned." So, thanks. So, thank you.
Two of my former debaters, just from Wayne.
Well, it's a good debate team.
You actually rank?
Yes, forensics and fencing are our two best sports.
Tally's law.
Good. The... Let's look on page two. And we have the motion on the floor. You see at the bottom, it says "main motions." Look across with me. Does a main motion require a second? Can you see? Here we are.
Go down to the bottom.
Yeah.
Yes.
And? Does it have a D? Is it debatable? Does it have an A? So it's amendable? M? Majority vote? And it can be reconsidered? So every motion, you can just look across the chart. Right? Have this right with you. You can go immediately to find out what it needs. So we have a main motion on the floor to buy a fire engine. Let's go up to "amend" because I think amend is a pretty common motion that people use. And right next to it, in the outside column, is types of amendments telling you what to say. Right here. To insert, to strike out a word, consecutive words or a paragraph, to strike out insert. So those are the different things you can do. So I think we ought to have a motion to amend by inserting. Someone care to take a stand at that?
I would like to make a motion. No? No, second. I move that.
I move "to amend."
I move "to amend." The motion for to buy a fire truck. By a steam-powered.
Okay, good. And that would be, "I move to amend by inserting steam-powered before fire engine." That's how that would sound. "I move to amend by inserting steam-powered before fire engine." Let's look at amend. Does it need a second? Yes, and it's debatable? It's amendable if it's an amendable motion, and it is, requires a majority vote, and reconsidered. So a motion has been made to amend, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend by inserting steam engine, the steam, before... Steam engine before fire. No, steam powered. Steam power before fire engine. And I would then go to the maker of the amendment. Would you like to speak to your amendment? Then I would go to others and ask them. And after sufficient debate, I would ask, "Any further discussion on inserting steam power?" Now, maybe at this juncture, Councilmember Tuesday said, "You know, we don't have a lot of money. So this better not be too expensive." In fact, I'm going to put a limit on this. I would say, as the chair, would you hold that thought for a minute? Because one of the things that makes parliamentary procedure so attractive is you can only discuss one thing at a time. And right now, we're talking about steam power. And we're going to focus on steam power. There is one thing, and as I say, I put myself in the same category, elected official, that we do better than anybody else. And that's get off the topic. We can be talking about putting a tree in a park. And then we're going to say, "Well, don't put two near the street because, you know, we have a lot of snow. If you use salt, it's going to get on it." You know, salt. How much salt did we use this winter? Are we going to need more next time? You know, which reminds me, you know, we're storing the salt. Do we not do that all the time? Absolutely. So therefore, parliamentary procedure for us is a way to stay on the topic. So I'm going to ask the council member to hold the thought for a moment. We're going to finish off steam-powered by voting on it. All those in favor of amending by inserting steam-powered before fire engine, say "aye" or "yes."
Yes.
Ayes have it. All those opposed, say "no." The ayes have it and the amendment is adopted to put steam power before fire engine. Now, the motion before you is to buy a steam-powered fire engine. And I would go back to the council member and say, "Did you wish to insert something in the motion about money?" And this would be a very common motion. You notice you can add at the end is to insert at a cost not to exceed...
We did that quite often.
Five hundred million?
I have a question in here. And I don't mean to interrupt you in the middle. When the council moves and seconds the item, when is it preferable for possibly the department head to step up and answer any and all questions? Would that be after the second or before the topic is officially...
In the case of a fire engine, which would not be a... Which would be a planned item, I would start with the report.
Okay.
Why do we leave one? What is recommended? How many bids did you get? You know, you would tell all that. And that is why you're able to find one. You just bought something from another community that you got a really good deal on. It was a piece of equipment. And he puts the dump truck... Oh, the dump truck. Yeah, the bucket truck. Anyway, that all would be presented first. Then you have the council members asking questions. Then they might ask you some questions and then they would make the motion. Then they would have more questions and they would ask you. So, but I think starting with a report very often gives everybody the same information and really saves time in the end because then they don't have so many questions.
Okay. We've been unclear on...
Well...
If that should be in the discussion?
You know, your comment as a question is a good one because let's remember, Roberts says...
Yes.
You shouldn't discuss anything with a motion on the table. But Bill has been very clear to talk about perception. And if we start with a motion, they're going to say, well, they sure would have got out beforehand, aren't they?
Well, then the agenda is published.
Right. But I mean, if we start on a topic with the motion and say, "Here's the action we're going to take," we don't always know in advance what action we're going to take. So some conversation is acceptable.
Okay.
But let's remember that the chair can monitor that. And the chair can always say, "Do I hear a motion to?" Do I hear a motion to? And you can do this in any of your organizations. If it just seems like nothing is happening and nothing is happening, then you want motions. Motions make actions work. Conversation before about consensus. Consensus isn't why you just have a lot of conversation. Had somebody called me not too long ago and say, "Your organization really needed help." And I said to her, "Well, can you send me a couple of copies of your minutes?" And there was a long pause and she said, "Minutes." So that kind of let me in on number one. And I finally, she found two sets and sent them to me and I said, "You don't have any motions." She said, "Oh, we're operating by consensus." And I said, "So how's that working for you?" The answer is, if you don't make motions, nothing actually happens. So I just, a little bit of conversation sometimes, but always start with a report. Always start.
Okay.
And when it's appropriate, of course. So we have a motion on the floor. Or no, we have the motion on the floor as amended. And now, we're going to have a motion to amend by adding at a cost not to exceed, who do you choose?
Amending not to exceed thirty-two. Is that what you said?
No, I'm asking, amend by not exceed, an amount not to exceed. I was going, "Do you choose the amount?"
I follow you. But who is it, Mark Warren?
For the fire truck. The steam engine fire truck.
I'm sorry, I'm hard to hear.
Oh, okay. What is the amount you want for the steam truck? Or for the steam engine? The fire engine? What do you spend?
Do you think you're thirty-two thousand?
Okay. It's been moved to amend...
That'd make party happy.
By adding at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? And of course, again, I would go to the maker of the amendment first, then ask for others. We'll assume that's finished. All those in favor of the motion to amend by adding at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars, say "aye."
Aye.
The ayes, all those opposed, say "no."
Although we have a policy that if it involves money, it will be a roll call vote.
There you go.
So, being that this is about money...
Then we'll assume the roll call vote and I will assume that the answer is yes. And the motion as amended to buy a steam-powered fire engine at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars is before you. I thought it might be, you'd be happy. And so, do you see that's how now we would vote on the motion as amended? What often goes wrong here is that people try to vote on the amendments after they voted on the main motion. But you always, if you can picture kind of your kid's blocks, here's the main motion, now you put an amendment on top of it and an amendment on that. You want to go backwards. Vote on the amendment, vote on the amendment, vote on the whole motion as amended. So that's, just to give you an idea, what's another motion that you use? Anything here that you... You adopt the budget?
Yeah.
Now, when you adopt the budget, do you adopt it line by line or as a total?
As a total.
Yeah. So that would be, "I move to adopt the 2015-16 budget for the city." And always make your motions nice and firm.
We say things like "as presented"?
Yes, you can say "as presented," but make sure you put in the whole title of what it is "as presented." Because again, you're informing people who are out there that what you're actually voting on. Did you have a question? Nope.
Especially if it's very long.
Yes.
Yes, sometimes.
Now, and you may find in time you'll want to use some character generating on the screen for some items if that, you know, as you develop your process.
Well, again, they're usually printed in the agenda.
Right. But you know what? Some of the people who are going to watch you don't have the agenda.
Oh, it's available on the same, it's a link on the same...
I understand that. Sometimes the public is not as into doing things as in the order that we would prefer.
Coco, if they're adopting something as presented, how much is incorporated formally into the minutes?
In the case of the budget, that's probably attached, is it not? How do you do that? Or do you just file the budget as budgets? Have to file the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. That varies tremendously.
So as long as it's referenced very specifically?
And that's why I want the motion to be very specific about exactly what it is. Do you use any prepared motions?
Yes.
Do you prepare some of the motions?
Yeah, the clerk does.
Almost all of them.
I think those are excellent because that way you get all the information you need in it. And then, of course, you're free to change it if there's some that you want to change.
But that's why to say "as presented," "as written," "as on the agenda," and that's why we tend, I mean, I think that's why we've done it that way.
Yes. And I'm not saying that that's wrong. I'm just saying I'd like you to firm that up a little bit stronger. The... An adjourn is a motion that requires a majority vote, just as the minutes require a majority vote. The, I had another call out, but I think... Do we have some general questions? How is everybody doing?
Chris, I'm here.
Review the video later.
Yes, we'll review the video later. See how we did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that was unfortunate. And this is the handy one because it has my email on it. And never mind what you're going to review. Tomorrow, you're going to send me an email and say, "What was it you..." What was it you said about?
I have a question now.
You bet.
Thank you for that.
First, we start with, "What's in your city charter?" Well, I was interested, when I commented to you that the mayor should say, "All those in favor, say 'aye.' Those opposed, say 'no.'" I was interested to read that in your charter, it actually says that the vote should be taken yes and no. And I wondered if I gave you a quiz, how many of you would have known that? Am I the person who has most recently read your city charter? I'm guessing yes.
Probably. And a year.
Does the charter describe how to fill a vacancy on council?
Yes.
Yes, it does. And that's very important. And of course, I asked the question, "Made a council vote by mail or telephone?" And Bill gave a very thorough description of that. "Is there any limitation on what can be expended by the administration on a project without prior approval?"
Not in the charter, but we have a policy.
How recently was your charter reviewed or revised?
I'd say a long time ago.
Usually charters get reviewed or revised when a change is made by the government. For example, oppositions are combined. In many communities, they've combined the secretary and the treasurer, and that causes a change in the charter. The second way is state law changes, and the third way is often union contract changes. So it's always worth it to look and see how it's reviewed or revised. I noticed yours is very clearly annotated at the end of each section on what changes have been made. Why use parliamentary procedure? So of course, people always say, "We don't need parliamentary procedure. We don't need it." I say, "Well, what do you do?" "Well, we just make motions and vote." Well, that is all. It really is. And so I asked my favorites, I've already named them, the Wayne State Student Senate, to tell me, help me make a list of what I could answer to people. So this is their list made several years ago. Parliamentary procedure allows individuals to express opinions, and they are very, very good about taking turns. There are twenty-four of them and they use something that looks a lot like a tense paddle and has their title on it. And they raise the paddle when they wish to speak and the person sitting next to the president writes down in order who's going to speak next. Very efficient. And they take turns so that you don't speak again on an issue until everyone's had a chance. It focuses discussion, saves time, provides a record in the minutes. And that's why they like parliamentary procedure. The basic objectives: accomplish the objectives for which the group is organized, expedite business, ensure justice and equality to all, maintain order. And when you maintain order, you do ensure justice and equality to all. The basic principles: the organization is paramount. The city council is the most important part, not the individuals. All members have equal rights. So now, that's an interesting one in home rule because that's not necessarily true. In Dearborn, the mayor sits separately from the council and only has veto power. In Rochester Hills and Detroit, the mayor doesn't even attend the meetings except by special invitation. It's all over the case. You are a part of the most common form of government, council manager form of government, but not the one that serves the most people. More people are served by strong mayor forms of government. These stuff, and so you don't necessarily have equal rights. Does your mayor make motions?
Yeah, usually. I don't know that we have a policy that he can't.
No, you cannot have a policy.
I was going to say, but we kind of just don't.
I think that's excellent. I think that's excellent because it's hard to maintain your position as being fair to everyone on issues if you're going to be the ones pushing your own agenda. So I think during the term, in a council manager form of government, during the period that you're mayor, it is wise not to make motions or second them. Soon, you'll be back in the council seat and you can do that. An established minimum, okay, that's a point. And only one main proposal may be before the assembly at a time and only one member may have the floor at a time. And I wanted to emphasize that because we just went through an exercise where we had actually a number of motions on the floor at the same time, didn't we? But there was only one main motion, which was to buy a fire engine. The others were things shining up, that fire engine. So you can have more than one motion on the floor at the same time, as long as it's on one main motion. And for full debate, okay, we may not. Oh. And we're going to go back to reconsideration in a minute. Let's see. Let's go to page three. A majority vote decides if question against. We did discuss that. Except where basic rights of members are involved or the rules of the organization, take proceedings, then a larger vote. then a larger vote is required. You have a very clear rule on abstention, and when people can abstain. A proposition or issue is never the item under, is the item under discussion, never the person who introduced it. So, the maker of the motion is entitled to speak first, as I said. A member may not speak against his own motion, but may vote against it. How could that happen? How would you make a motion and then vote against it?
If it had been amended?
Yes, if it had been amended. Another way would have been, you make the motion, it's seconded, stated by the chair, and they've been, just begin discussing it, and you say, this is not a good motion. And you say, I move to, I request permission to withdraw my motion. Since that motion has been stated by the chair, whose motion is it?
The chair's.
Everyone's. It's everyone's. So I, so you alone, Molly, can't ask to withdraw your motion? The chair has to say, is there any objection to the motion being withdrawn? Well, maybe it's not the motion you meant, but they like it. So they object, and they do not permit you to withdraw your motion. When it comes time to vote, you may vote against it. So that's a position where you will speak against your motion, but, but amendment's the most common one. People put amendments on that you don't like. All remarks must be limited to the merits of the subject under discussion. Go back to your little yellow sheet. So here we are. Go to page two. So here we were, we would start it out discussing putting a tree in the park. Now we're discussing salt. What should you or the member do to get things back on track? I want you to look, the main motion's at the bottom, go all the way up, past subsidiary motions, and you see, call for the orders of the day. You see that? It's about, about here on the sheet, where my finger is, about in the middle. Call for the orders of the day. What does that have after it?
Be careful.
An aye. An aye for? Interrupt. So when this conversation is going on, any member, not the audience, any member of the council may say, may interrupt and say, uh, Mayor Hall, this, can we get back to the motion on the floor? Could we back, get back to the item on the agenda? I, I mention this as members to do it, because as a person who is often chaired meetings, sometimes I get as caught up in the conversation about the tree and the ice and the salt as everybody else, and it's until somebody, usually, I always hope that I have a, I'm chairing a board where I have one person who's at least a little bit impatient.
That would be the mayor. And we're very lucky.
Come on, come on. Back to, now, of course, call for the orders of the day is the parliamentary way. The person might just interrupt and say, Mayor, could we get back to the agenda? Sometimes people just go like this to the mayor and say, you know, kind of cue the mayor and let the mayor do it. But that's what happens when you're way off track. Use that, call for the orders of the day, and notice that it can interrupt the person who's speaking. Right above it, we have raise a question of privilege. That also can interrupt. And that is, I rise to a question of privilege. What's your question? I can't hear. The people next to me are making too much noise. It's too cold. It's too hot. Something that is in your way of participating fully as a member of the group. That's a question of privilege. While we're doing the interrupts, you can turn the page over and go to here, right about there in the middle, right where the fold is. Oh, excuse me. Fine, if you fold. Point, oh, there you go. Point of order. That can also interrupt. And that's when something is happening in a meeting that you feel is inappropriate. Point of order. The chair should immediately say, escape your point. And you can say, I haven't spoken yet, and someone else has spoken three times. Okay, now let's go back to the paper. All remarks must be addressed to and or through the chair. I would just say to you, in general, as you attend meetings and as you chair meetings, if you can achieve that, then you will have a good meeting. Because that prints it down to everyone is paying attention, only one person is speaking. Members are seldom referred to by name rather by title. That is a choice that everybody makes on what they would like to be called. I notice you use Mr. and Mrs. That's, that's wonderful. I mean, you just should choose something that you like. And I think a certain amount of formality is appropriate. No member may comment adversely on any prior act of the council not under consideration. And that's for the, in honor of a council member that I served with, who always said, we never should have widened Adams Bridge. It didn't matter what you were talking about. I didn't vote for it, he'd say. At the top of page four, no person should speak a second time on a motion as long as another is request, I'm sorry, now we've gone to public debate. Now, you have the four-minute rule. I don't know if you need this one, too. No person should speak a second time on a motion as long as another is requesting recognition to speak for a first time. Since you don't have the public speaking at the microphone, you might not need that one. Whether or not you want that for yourselves, you care. How much can a city council limit itself in debate? A long conversation, many, many years of debate, you'd be, during which time I contended that city council members could not limit themselves, after all, the public limit, you know, voted for them to talk. And he contended that they could. Well, time has shown that he was correct, because there are cities, villages, and townships in this state that have different kinds of rules in that council rules of procedure regarding how the council conducts itself. Some have a rule, no one speaks again on an issue until everyone's had a chance. Some have a rule that no person may speak more than five minutes at one time. Some have, I know one that has a rule that says, on any issue, every council person must, may only speak once. The point is, as you would guess, you remember what I said in the opening about the consent agenda? Anytime we take away somebody's rights, it takes a two-thirds vote. So why have all those councils, in one way or another, chosen to limit their right to speak by a two-thirds vote? Probably because they had one council member who was talking all the time, who interrupted, or who didn't let everybody else have a turn. So, you know, they, they took that. I know some places where it has been enormously successful, and councils have developed a level of civility that they did not have before. So I'm not suggesting it for you, because I didn't see anything in, in the two meetings I watched that would suggest you needed it, but I'm just letting you know that it's out there. You notice, I'm a two-minute person. I think you're very generous with four minutes. I'll give you a little assignment. When you go home, time yourself to convince yourself of something. If I give you more than two minutes, you're going to tell it to me again, because there's hardly anything that we can't express in two minutes. The speaker may be asked but not required to state name and other requested identifying information. And I really enjoy it, the, you know, group of city attorneys who recommended one area in which they have conversation. I like to know, yes, we all agree, you cannot, you cannot be required to sign your name to attend a meeting. Can you be required to sign in to speak? School boards frequently have sign-ins to speak. Some city councils do.
We had a sign-in as a request, that you, they would still let people at the end. So the idea was, you got first preference, if you're being listed on the list.
Yeah. So I, it's, it's just very debatable. Many communities have dropped asking the person when they get up to speak about their address, because some have unfortunately had people go to other people's homes when they said the address, because it was clear that here they were at the city council meeting, and now they've said where they live.